Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, minutes of the previous meeting.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in the second. Do you have any additions or corrections? Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion carries. agenda, anything to add? Yeah, I guess I take the motion to approve.
Approve.
Right. We have a motion in a second to approve each other. All in favorable, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion carries. Okay, Roger, morning.
Got some uh. Want to purchase some tables for the memorial building. I've got two separate uh bids here so to speak. Uh one from Southern Aluminum for four hundred eighty-one dollars per table, but there is shipping added on for for ten tables, so it's down to five forty-three, forty-three. And for um another company here um. Modern Office. Um and their price would be seventy-eight, seven thousand eight hundred ninety-four, ten tables. So. If you look closely on that Modern Office, that table down there, that's a Southern Aluminum logo that's on that table. So they just purchased them from Southern Aluminum and resold.
You can read that?
If I recognize the logo, it isn't as good here as my original copy, but this is a Southern Aluminum.
So what are the other tables, Roger?
Pardon?
What are the other tables you?
They're all Southern Aluminum.
Those are very nice.
Yeah.
They're very good to work with.
Yeah.
And we're replacing the ones in the whole.
Yeah.
There's some, there's the old, for like the tables under replaced, just out of that a couple more.
Couple? No.
Ten.
Ten.
Yeah.
Ten.
So there's some were replacing, pardon, eight were replaced.
We replaced an eight, okay.
Fifty dollars.
I'm going to approve.
Second.
Okay.
We have a motion.
For the Southern.
The lower.
Yeah. We have a motion in a second to approve the little bid from Southern Aluminum, correct?
Yes.
For ten tables for fifty, forty-three.
Okay, further discussion on the motion. Okay, seeing no further discussion, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Full same sign.
Also regarding the generator here, I um wrote off a little thing that's in the, uh, sort of Newspaper Association paper. I had uh, uh, saved to try and tweak it a little bit. And I've got a email address that you send this to and at the Newspaper Association, they told me I sent it to a certain person and they know which newspapers to put it in. That was what they told me. So. I guess the only thing we would need to decide is the date and time to and the instrument of um electric power mechanic engineer.
Nobody talked about before. How old is that generator?
Uh, it's a twenty-three.
What budget are we going to take this out of then?
It's hard to know.
Estimated cost?
As we figured earlier, the three hundred A F U generator would power the whole.
Would what?
Would power the whole building.
I think we talked estimated cost last week, probably in that four hundred dollars on the new boat, probably Volberg figure with the engineering on it could be.
The freezing, freezing prices from what I've had to.
Figured three before with the engineering, but it's gonna be more than that actually. But that's what we expect on the other dollars, so.
And this will be diesel powered, right?
Pardon?
Be diesel powered, right?
Yes. Well, you know, actually Chris and I talked about being natural gas, it might be easier.
Cheaper um, you think the original cost of the generator would be cheaper on natural gas or diesel?
I don't know, but it certainly just be easier. You wouldn't have to worry about changing out fuel or anything like that.
Wouldn't need a fuel tank.
Pardon?
Wouldn't need a fuel tank, you just look at it as natural gas.
Yeah, yeah.
That makes sense. Look at that anyway.
Yeah.
Compared.
Right. That wouldn't have to be done before we would put this in the papers, but that would be something to consider.
Yeah, the question I have, I, I don't know enough about natural gas, but when we lose electricity citywide, does natural gas have flow problems? Cause they have valves and things of such nature or?
Like they keep flowing.
They keep flowing, okay. I mean, I just, I've never been on natural gas before, so I have no idea.
I think it has a regulator.
Yeah, just got a regulator, it doesn't have to on that place, like valves maybe, it's just.
Governor gets his way, he's gonna build his natural gas mine and wants to turn it around to go to the Grand Court, so. He can get a bid, I guess. Might bid on it.
He'd bid it both ways.
Pardon?
Bid it both ways.
Boy, that wouldn't hurt to bid one each and see if there's a massive cost difference or maybe it's way more, I don't know.
I think the first thing is to get this out in paper and get a
Right.
an engineer hired uh and then they can make their recommendations.
Right, because I don't like the engineer, which way you want to go.
Do we have to run it so many weeks, you know? It doesn't matter. How many weeks do you have to run it? It doesn't matter.
Well, yeah, I think most things it would be three times, like over three weeks, isn't it? At most.
Well, it's whatever our regular legal process would be. When we do the road bids, how long do we?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, it'd be over a hundred thousand twenty-one there.
Okay, so three times over three weeks and then set a date to open bid, then probably what, hung out at least?
Yeah.
Second meeting in October probably. That's what I'd say that would be.
Eighteenth.
So say eighteenth at four P M or something like that, so we, that way you know you got the documentation and we'll open them at five thirty?
Well, either that or put the deadline.
Day before.
Day four.
There you go.
That'd be fine.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, then I guess uh a motion would be in order then to do, to advertise with the documentation in front of us with the start date of the seventeenth of October at four P M and then we'll open bids at that second meeting in October.
Move the motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second then to advertise for a new generator or for engineers for a new generator.
Right.
Uh. And we'll open second meeting in October. Further discussion on the motion.
We'll just have them to our office.
Yeah.
Cause then if somebody says it. We need.
I think in this advertising for engineers, if you want to tell them we're looking at both the diesel and the gas, I think you should put that in there.
Well. Yeah, they would, they would tell whatever engineer that we give a bid to that we're looking at both, both diesel and natural gas, yes, but that doesn't have to go into here.
The engineers are aware of that. You're just looking for the engineer that.
We're just looking for the engineer and once we find an engineer, then we will say, yes, we're looking at both diesel or natural gas.
I assume the engineering would probably not change a whole heck of a lot other than obviously.
Other than things. You know, we should just tell them right away. But still, cause they're gonna have questions on what we want to.
What, I guess my question is, I know we have to have an engineer, but what exactly are the engineering?
Electrical design.
I don't.
Some for the.
Okay. Well, that obviously is important, but the, the fuel source to me is probably not gonna be that as important to them because
No.
they don't care as long as they get it built up.
It might not be a lot engineering if it's already happened here.
Well, that's kind of what I'm thinking. It's like, I mean, we're gonna need probably larger feet in the building, I would assume and as and how we hook into the building is gonna be different than it is currently because we don't generate for the building or we can't probably generate for the building. There'll be some changes, I'm sure.
If the engineer doesn't want to come and take a look at our existing blast I'd be skeptical and not make sure they look. I think we should definitely tell them we're looking at both natural gas and I really think they're aware of what we're looking for.
Okay. Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor of advertising, uh, what was I saying, aye?
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion carries. Very good. Roger. Okay, this is twelve, can't go until eight-thirty, Bush can't go until nine. Kevin?
Okay, we'll start with the update on projects. Uh, Rowland did your bill and Bill turned it down to ten, that's one of the forests and those two projects are finished. David Patson, nothing has changed there. Uh, although the shadow is still run their plant just about every day, so they're still paying in power. We're kind of left with that way. And I added the railroad crossing in Southland. We're supposed to start working on that this week and then it'll be in service in October. Where they come. These are railroads doing most of the work themselves. Totally one of their teams.
It's kind of interesting how they, they're on like a big bid, cause like when we had the little road builders and the guy was on a T- cover of balls or something like that, you're okay, basically a long way to wait.
Any questions on our projects that were?
All right, just a finished date and what else this fall?
Uh, yep, yep, we're supposed to start, you know, like doing the dirt work, setting on base or a combination for the stuff, we'll start doing that this week.
They think in probably a couple, couple, three weeks?
Yeah, for electricity. Then it's in service next month, I'm guessing, middle of next month.
Can you turn off?
Okay, on our, on the bridges that were replaced and we finally got the um hydraulic report back from the state, so the water board has given us a recommendation on what to replace those two bridges with. Uh, one of them is the one up in Thatcher, all ships have been replaced with three eighty-four inch covers and the one way up in the corner of Brown Center is twenty-eight inch covers. I guess at this time, just looking for a motion to accept the water board's recommendation.
Approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to accept the water board's recommendation for cover replacements on the two bridges. Further discussion on that. Three eighty-four years forward.
Wow, a lot of water.
Yeah. Okay, further discussion, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion carries.
So in order of those covers, for those, those two bridges, the third one that we had done uh, we got an hydraulic port back two, two or three years ago. And we already had a bridge, or a cover size recommendation for that, so the price of all three of those the covers is sixty, about sixty-three thousand. I need to order those.
Approve.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to order covers for the two bridges we spoke about before and a third bridge for sixty-three thousand dollars. Or just get them in the order stream for next year?
Yeah, I want to get them at this year's price, so.
Yep, understandable. Okay, further discussion on the motion order covers. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion carries.
And the last thing I have is our program sheet. I can lay the copy on everybody's desk. Um, we added the uh, the top box there, we added our paving project for the year two thousand twenty-four. Uh, insole flattening, that basically is another term for shoulder widening. So this is the price that are, well, good widening the shoulders on, because they're on around three from seventeen south, nine point two mile south. So from this Hammond Road that we just paid last year, go straight south of there. And a fall came up in Madison, so. Uh, we did, on the federal aid part there, we did, we're borrowing ahead. Uh, it's just a show of numbers, we'll have, hopefully have a go for money.
There you go, there you go.
Pretty long. So, but we didn't, we didn't add that in there, it's, we realized that it would be not money at all.
So we, we believe we're gonna get that two point two million in federal aid though, so it'll be out there.
If we borrow ahead, we borrow ahead.
We can get to that number, so we can, so we've been talking five hundred thousand plus then, brother.
Well, that's, the, the total project is two, two point.
Yeah, but I'm saying we'll have to come up with five hundred thousand a year then, whether it's credit card money or, or levy money.
That's like an eighty twenty match.
How far ahead will we be out on the federal aid borrowing then?
Yeah, that's a really good question. And we don't know our dollars either, so, but I would say probably two or three years.
Okay. I just want to make sure we don't get up too far ahead.
Right. But I guess the main point there is we'll have some credit on the money for. And of course, the second block is our first project, which we had in the works for years. We just, he changed the date on our bid opening that you know, got changed by the state, so. That's a whole different story. And then I added the uh, flood projects that happened this year with washouts. There's four of those listed there on the E R part. Other federal aid program.
Those will be eighty twenty?
Yep, eighty twenty. Engineering is also eighty twenty. And that's figured into those. And all these projects are patched up for now. Yeah, we'll, right, we'll get through the winter. Thing, only thing we'll have to watch is some of them got a little bit reduced in cover size. That's the only thing we'll have to watch next spring. So I guess uh, this is what we have to bring to the convention with us in October for review. Oh, they're asking for, my gosh, they're gonna turn from chairman before we get down there. Wouldn't you motion? Approve.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion in a couple of seconds. Um, or signature on the program sheets as listed. Projects for next year and twenty twenty-four. Uh, further discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion carries.
That's all I have.
Anybody have any questions for Kevin? Seeing none, thanks Kevin. Okay. Only got ten minutes or so. So let's uh. Boy, there's nothing, it's gonna be quick here. Now, let's just dive right into the, the joint powers agreement, cause that is definitely super great, don't they? Um, we have the yeah, it was in our package, so. The new joint powers agreement, second draft, uh, came back from the law enforcement center board. Uh, it was marked up by the sheriff department, correct? They looked it over as they call, I believe. Make sure there wasn't anything in there. Yes, so there were a few changes if you all noticed. Uh, one of the main ones, uh, reimbursement was taken out on the wage and everything. We'll be back to the rent coming costs. Records, yes, seven disappeared. Uh, the termination window, I believe, was made ninety days. Uh, as we talked about, number ten, termination was made ninety days on the, uh, as we talked about, uh, to make sure that we give people time. Address. I think that, that's pretty much, yes. The only changes that were made. Did the law enforcement center board be okay with this?
Yeah. I don't, we haven't seen it yet. Well, I've heard it.
Oh, you haven't seen the second draft yet? Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
You said.
I believe so, correct? Yeah, and the sheriff's department marked it up as well to see if they had anything just from the functional standpoint of how things would operate, if they had any. They had some question marks here, um, like underwear as and things like that, but I think most of that stayed in. The main stuff was, like I said, uh um, was the reimbursement and then the termination portion of the agreement.
Right.
Insurance and all that stayed in. They got some questions on that, so who has to cover insurance, I think, but they all stated, I think, pretty much as is.
I don't see a huge problem with bond orders there.
Although not, not the reimbursement's being changed up, so it's not gonna be in costs, so.
Right.
That might be a, let's see, but.
I think it's fine.
I do, I do too. I, I think it'd be we can go ahead and approve it and make that motion.
Okay. I'll talk on that. Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the agreement for the captain of the law enforcement center. Further discussion on the agreement or the motion. That's fairly straightforward, I guess. And we'll be approved, we'll wait to hear back from the law enforcement center. Okay, further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion carries. Okay, we're with you, Dr. Law enforcement center, see if we can get a sign. Okay, four H proclamation. That was in our package. I don't think it's signed that for later, I don't think, right?
Forty-five.
Forty-five, I can come take a picture, feel special.
Really?
You know? It's what he said, you can come and take a picture. So again, you go, that gets beautiful. But uh, October second through the eighth is four H week uh, this year. Uh, and Cindy contacted me and said they'd really like if we could do a proclamation from the county, you know, saying that four H week is coming and we're, you know, basic words of four week, four H week, so four H week in October second uh, through the eighth would be uh four H week, National Four H Week in Ramsey County as well. So that's what the proclamation basically states.
You'd like a motion to go ahead and approve that, uh, that we recognized, uh, October second through the eighth as National Four H Week?
Yes. Yes, that is what we're looking for. Would you like me to read the proclamation?
And I've seen it. And move to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have, we have a motion in a second to approve signature and, and approve the proclamation stating, uh, October second to the eighth is National Four H Week and is recognized in Ramsey County. Uh, further discussion on that. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion carries. Very good. Okay, still got a couple of minutes. Let's jump down on new business to the meeting date, we've got it taken care of. October fourth is Tuesday, but we will be at least portioned or maybe all of us will be in the, that's the association, county officials today. Uh. Put my calendar here. So we want to go with the sixth on Thursday at eight A M, correct?
Yeah.
Is that okay with everyone? If we switch to Thursday, the sixth at eight A M?
Yep.
We've been kind of hopping dates around very times, dates around a little bit, but everybody has. Okay, if that's okay with everyone, I guess I entertain a motion to do so. So.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to move the first meeting of October from the fourth at eight to the sixth, Thursday, the sixth at eight A M. Further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion carries. Yes. Uh, state fair delegate, you can handle that probably real quick too. Um, I believe that was our state fair delegate last year and said on the sheets. Was she, is she interested in serving again or should be willing to? She would be, Jeff says she'd be willing to. If we have a willing volunteer, I think we take it, correct?
Correct.
Do we have a motion to appoint Beth Black to be our state fair delegate?
I mean.
All right, we have a motion in a second to reappoint Beth Black to their state fair delegate. Further discussion. Seeing none, all in favor, vote by saying aye.
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion carries. Okay, I don't think we want to dive into anything in the next few minutes probably because it's gonna take a little longer as. So we'll just chill for a second here and uh, I suppose we gotta get the telephone going here in a second, so we can go on the the eight-thirty, just to call the budget period.
Will we be in the.
Yep, those are access codes.
You have that?
All I have is the attendee guide.
Okay, we're just waiting for the other counties. I think that's the only ones on at this one.
They changed. Add some Roger, including diesel or electric, or diesel or gas generator, he changed the order on that so we could.
Good morning.
Hello.
This is Karen and Pierce.
Hello.
Hello, this is Benson County calling in.
Welcome. It'll just be a moment. We're still waiting for Eddie Cullen, I believe.
Hello, Eddie Cullen.
Okay, Eddie County's with us.
Yes.
All right, very good, thank you. All right, is everybody prepared to get started?
Ready to go.
Okay. Uh, this, this is Adam Liphon, Chair of the Ramsey County Commission. Uh, I will call the meeting to order. First order of business on the agenda is the election of the chairman for the meeting. Do we have any nominations for chairman? Oh, we didn't pick you up there. Okay. Oh, yes, whenever we make a motion, can we identify ourselves just for the minutes, please? Okay, Mike Christiansen is nominated, myself.
Ed Brown makes second.
Ed Brown seconds. Any further nominations? Any further nominations? Any further nominations? Hearing done. All in favor of a motion to appoint myself chairman, vote by saying aye.
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 Close same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, second order of business, roll call of counties. You want to call it up handy, I'll allow you to do it if you'd like. Okay, we'll start with Benson County. Uh, who is, who is present from Benson County? Okay, very good, thank you. Pierce County?
Who was the last one?
You're, you're breaking up slightly. Can you, can you speak a little louder, please? David Bernard, thank you very much. Eddie County?
See him from here by phone.
Okay.
I'll keep listening in.
Okay, very good, thank you. And in Ramsey County, we have Jeff Prith, Blaine Volk.
Ed Brown.
Lisa DSAF.
And myself, Adam Liphon. Okay? That means we have a forum of all the commissions. Thank you very much for that. Okay, from there, we will go to, uh, minutes of the previous meeting, so the twenty twenty-one meeting, the minutes were presented in the packets or sent out to you. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Okay, Doris Griffin from Benson County moves to approve the minutes. Do we have a second? We have a second here in Ramsey from Blaine Volk. Additions, corrections, or discussion on the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes. This is Blaine Collier, Eddie County.
Wait, we have a motion already, Glenda, but I appreciate it. Okay, further discussion, hearing done. All in favor of the minutes, vote by saying aye.
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 Close same sign. Motion carries and the minutes are approved. Thank you. All right, from there, we will go to the twenty twenty-three budget and we have Al McKay here to talk us through it and then we'll have a discussion following.
Thank you very much. Uh, as you can see, uh, the total for the health unit is about two million, two hundred and forty-four thousand, seven hundred and forty-one dollars. And then including family planning and WIC, it may, comes up to two million, six, ten, eight, ninety-four. So it's all, it's been all broken out in the different, uh, uh, areas of the budget. Does anybody have any questions whatsoever on the budget itself? It is slightly higher than last year, not very much. Uh, we are still below five mils, which is good. Um, and, uh, you know, that's what we'll be looking at for twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so any discussion or questions on the budget? Uh, as, as Al said, we are at an equalized four point two nine, seven mils. So we're under our five mil cap, but it's a little bit higher than last year. Any, any questions on the budget? Hearing done, I would entertain a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three budget, budget for the Lake Ridge District Health Unit. Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner DSAF here in Ramsey County. Do we have a second?
How was our guest, Glenda?
Okay, we have a second from Glenda Collier and Eddie County. Further discussion? Hearing done, we will roll call, please. Andy Jeff, the roll call here, I think, for the, list their names. Okay, Mike Stefan.
Aye.
Davy Davidson.
Aye.
Doris Griffin.
Yeah.
Ron Statham.
Aye.
Is that everyone in Benson, correct?
Yes.
Thank you. Eddie County, Glenda Collier.
Aye.
Neil Rude.
Aye.
Dave Gertz.
Aye.
Thank you. Pierce County, Mike Christiansen.
Aye.
Mike Roser. David Migler. Terry Hopper.
Aye.
David Bernard. We didn't catch you there, David. Okay, thank you very much. Uh, here in Ramsey, Jeff Prith.
Aye.
Ed Brown.
Aye.
Lisa DSAF.
Aye.
Blaine Volk.
Aye.
And Adam Liphon is an aye. So it passes all counties. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Uh, from there, uh, is there any other business to go before the meeting?
Then this is probably my last business before the committee. I will be done, uh, the end of September. I have Ashley, who's taken my place. So, um, yeah, I thank you very much. It's been a, a pleasure of working with you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Al. Appreciate it. And everybody's, I'm sure Ashley will be around talking to all the counties at some point. If you have a chance, stop in and say hi to her. Okay, seeing nothing else, I would take a motion to adjourn.
I'll move.
Okay, we have a motion and I'll take Doris's as a second if that works. Okay, we have a motion in a second to adjourn. All in favor, vote by saying aye.
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 Close same sign. Motion carries and we adjourn. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Al. We need to get like them all, everybody needs their face on the screen up there, so we can see everybody's smiling. Maybe get the, the Zoom call going. Okay. It was, I liked it. It's a good way to go on. No, not S, not S.
Thank you, welcome.
Thank you. Okay, from there, we'll move back up to ARPA committee, I guess, is the next on the agenda, the new business. Uh, the ARPA committee sheet was distributed earlier. So, uh, the ARPA committee met on Friday morning, um, for about an hour, hour and a half. There were thirteen different projects that were submitted, uh, for possible funding to the ARPA committee um, from eleven different entities. So one entity did multiple, but they did it in different options for us, uh, so we could kind of pick and choose kind of how things were going to work. Um, of those eleven entities and thirteen projects, nine were funded, if I remember correctly, or chosen to possibly be funded. Uh, and under that number one on the list, those are the projects that we chose to fund, um, from the ARPA committee level. So as you can see, the, the, the top, uh, nine there, uh, Devil's Lake Public School Lake Center, uh, two hundred and fifty thousand, Devil's Lake Parkport for the entertainment center, two hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, Mobile Career Exploration Unit, twenty thousand, the City of Crary for their, uh, new siren, ninety-five hundred. And we're hoping on that one, we might be able to get some money out of emergency management type thing possibly, so that might change a little bit, but we decided we better fund it because they need the siren pretty bad, I guess. They don't have one and hopefully we can get one before next tornado season. Lake Ridge Heritage Center, uh, specifically for the roof, they were the one that put in multiple different options, uh, but we went and said we'd like to see the money spent on the roof, fifty thousand. Lake Ridge District Health, uh, they need a environmental pickup and something to pull their trailer for emergency type stuff. Uh, they had, we, we gave them a smaller ask of ten thousand dollars. The Hope Center, um, for increased costs of food, it was actually quite eye-opening reading their documents. The cost of food is like quadruple on them and they basically, you would think like from the Great Plains, um, food bank that, oh, they just get the food. No, they got to pay for it every month. So, and they live on donations, so sixty thousand will all offset additional food costs. Uh, and then lastly, on that list of the asks, uh, where Devil's Lake Rule Fire, they're looking to buy a new rescue truck. Uh, they got a bunch of grain detonation equipment and stuff, which is all, you know, good things, but their truck is too small enough, so they're looking to get a new rescue truck. A hundred thousand to them. Uh, and then the overarching discussion in the ARPA committee was, we didn't want to spend all that half of the dollars because we needed to save some of that to go back to the county to do additional things because we know there's more expenses. So we built in two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for siren radios. Um, whether they're going to be county dollars for siren radios or to go out to Rule Fire and EMS type stuff, the county can make that decision, but that money's there just for radios and if you don't need the whole two fifty, then the county can pull it back in and spend it on whatever they would need at a county level. Uh, but that's, we figured that that was a good use of the dollars is to roll some of that back, so basically of, of the total ARPA dollars, the money going out the door under this proposal would be right around seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to the outside entities. Uh, two hundred and fifty thousand to siren would be possibly outside entities as well, uh, with, you know, Rule Fire and things of that nature, uh, they need some help. Uh, the second portion of the, of the proposal is just my thought process. This is not the ARPA committee's proposal, this is just my thought process on the Ramsey County side of dollars, because I was thinking, how do we pencil our side of the dollars, basically? Uh, I shouldn't say our side, but the remaining dollars that are there. Uh, in talking with Roger, obviously generator was number one on the priority list, four hundred thousand to the generator. Uh, I'll skip down to the next one. We need the phone system at some point. We've been talking about it for a few years, the projection on that from N D T C was about seventy-five thousand. To re-outfit the phones, uh, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars then would get us the remainder, other than that other one I'll talk about in a second. Um, so that would be various county projects. That would be able to cover touchless faucets, duct cleaning, bottle fillers, update lighting, um, handicap bathroom upgrades. Um, and if there's anything left over, you can use those dollars for county siren costs, hopefully would be the thought process. Again, this is just my chicken scratch on how to make those dollars work. Uh, the one thing that was sticking in the back of my mind in the whole process here too was, we have made a commitment as a county towards the fair building. And if we're going to make a commitment to the fair building, how are, how is that going to be funded long-term? My thought process was, if this is something a future commission's going to have to make a decision on, but the thought process I had was take a half million of those ARPA dollars and then you would have that other half million, then you could fund that through a loan like we did the, uh, search and rescue building. And you could do that over a time, time span of years, but if you're going to do it that way, then the commission at some point is going to have to tell the fair board, you have a drop dead date for that fundraising. Because we have to know by this date if you're going to spend those dollars or not, because if not, it will be pulled back into the county. And then it can be spent on whatever the county can spend something on, in the top set budget.
What is that date?
Uh, it would be all based off of the spending deadlines in the ARPA bill and I honestly can't tell you off the top of my head where, we have to have it figured by twenty twenty-four, I think, because you have to have it appropriated. So you'd have to give them a drop dead date, probably slightly previous to that, just you would know that money's going to come back or not. And then you can appropriate accordingly. I would say probably next October or something, because that would give you time before next year's budget to roll into the twenty twenty-four budget. But again, this is my chicken, right? So that's got to be a future commission's decision, but I wanted to make sure that we carved out possibly a portion of those ARPA dollars to help aid with that fair building. So that all of those dollars don't have to come out of a future budget. Because that's a part of my thought process. So I guess this is, this is what we, but the top eight up there, um, those are, none of, nobody received, well, I shouldn't say nobody, a couple of them received a full, full ask, but they were the small, small projects like the siren, because ninety-five hundred bucks, you're not going to do half of that, ninety-five hundred bucks. We, for a, for a matter of process, so everybody understands how this works. It was subjective to a point, but we had scoring criteria in multiple categories. The four members of the committee, so myself and Candy and Brad, Brad Barth and Suzie, uh, from tourism. And also a big thank to everyone on the committee, because this was honestly one of the hardest issues I've had to do since I've been on the commission, because everybody had good quality asks on what they were looking for, but projects all had high quality merit and they were good things that would help the community. But we all scored all of the recommend, all of the committee or the proposals separately, blind, off of those guidelines, off of the different, off of the different, uh, categories. And then once we scored them all blind, then we were able to look at the other people's numbers. And it was actually quite, quite interesting because the top five, four or five proposals after Suzie, myself and Candy scored them, we all scored the top five the same. Not like the same numbers, but they were in order. This is the first, this is the second, this is the third type of thing. So even though it was somewhat subjective, the committee was pretty whole in saying, this is, we think these projects have the, you know, have the most shovel ready and these dollars will be put together and said over there. Again, the commission as a whole gets to make its decision on how much to spend the money. This is just a recommendation, but this is what we came up with after going through the process. Questions?
I, yeah, I got a question. Um, I know the Lake Ridge Heritage Center, the roof, the fifty thousand, I mean, the roof was just so much money. So the thing is, could they use this on the steps? I mean, because that was forty thousand, I mean, I, I, can they have a choice?
I think we would work with them on it. The commission could work with it on it.
Because I'm sure they're going to ask at the meeting.
The, the, the thing we thought when we were putting it together, I think, was there's no way to fund the old floor. Because it was, it was eight hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars or something like that.
I, I saw your fan. Yes.
But re-rubbering the roof was like seventy, I think is what her guess was, but she didn't have an actual bid. So we thought, if he's a good place to start.
Okay.
And, and maybe they could fundraise and get to that seventy to re-rubber the roof, and if they can't, then maybe they could come back and say, hey, we can't make that money. We could go to the, go to the steps, but the preference would be obviously the roof, because you got a leak in roof, you got a bad building.
Oh, definitely.
So that was kind of the thought process behind it, but I, I think there's less, the, the commission has the flexibility to do whatever they would like to do, I mean.
Okay.
And, and to be honest, I had one, um, outside entity actually contact me about, um, they missed the submission deadline, didn't know about it is what they're, they said, so I, and I forgot to bring it up with the committee, but I think we would have said, well, you missed the deadline, you missed the deadline, but if they have any question, if they are looking for dollars, they can always put together a proposal and come to the county and sit separately. For things that they have needs, just like we've ever, we, you know, we fund the safe house that way, we fund a lot of different things that way. Further questions?
I do have a question for Terry, since he's here. This two hundred and fifty thousand dollars you guys are asking for the entertainment center, is there a plan?
Yeah, we've got to, we can hire a construction manager, a residential veteran architect, and their busy equipment. They've got some designs, put together that we can go through, and narrow it down to what we want. So we expect to have, uh, within the next month, they have a pretty firm plan. And I mean, it's, you know, we had a, uh, we had some, uh, public forums and, uh, asking the people what they want in the building and, uh, the way, we've got, the top of items that they wanted in there was, uh, pickleball court, indoor playground, uh, movie theater, bowling alley. Um, simulators and a washing track. And we've got, the design that we've got, put together, all those are gonna be in there. And there may get a few other things, it's gonna be a work, a aquarium, stuff like that.
And we saw prelim design, just sketch outs of where they should lay in the building and stuff as part of the proposal. With kind of the dollar figures associated, basically. And the hope was, uh, you know, uh, Jeff and I sat in on a meeting with the city, the hope was that they were gonna step to the table too and do something that is similar dollar figure, hopefully. So, you know, we're all, we all can kind of step up behind it and say, we think this is a priority for the community, provide something for the kids.
So when you, you've got entertainment, if you do the Entertainment Center, are you guys moving your staff to the Entertainment Center?
That's, that's kind of what we're planning on doing with the office over there.
I'm just looking, it'd be better for the public.
Yeah.
And I'm just asking a question because the questions have been, I would, on the public, I mean, I know your forum. You know, people are paying us taxes that you guys are accumulating now of, you know. So I just wanna make sure so that it actually goes into that center. Not so that this is getting a piggyback and all of a sudden we have an enormous amount of money.
It actually don't start, actually start accumulating the dollars first of the year.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Yeah, just so that the first of the year doesn't start accumulating and there's not a plan.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're thinking, we've got some prelim estimates, we're thinking it's gonna cost a couple million bucks to get this building built.
Yeah.
With all this stuff in it, so.
Well, and, and like you said, when we were at our meeting, the four hundred thousand will be good, cause that's projected sales tax yearly, but that's gonna be operations and maintenance, rental and building, all of those things. Additional staff needed to run it. Well, we need some startup dollars over to get her fitted up so we can get her on it, so rather than later instead of waiting for the sales tax.
I think you're really underestimating two million dollars. The fact is, the locker room at the high school is one point nine million.
Well, I don't think if we got the.
I think you're looking at maybe like thirty million.
What?
I'm thinking you're gonna be looking at like thirty million. I'm just being, if that's one point nine million, if you wanna build all these entities.
The building's already there, so.
Okay. I'm just saying, if you were putting up a building and everything.
Or just renovating.
Yeah, but, and I think it's, you know, where, you know, if, say, I would assume the park ward's got some flexibility, if they, we can only come up with a million, seven, five and okay, then we'll have to pick and choose what you can afford to put in right away. And maybe you say, we put in something a little later, we'll be fundraised a little more, or we can get some action there, whatever the deal is. And, and the kicker of it is too, with any of these dollars, you know, the checks aren't gonna go out the door the minute it's approved. The checks won't go out the door until a project is going and, and they approve that they need this money. And then the county can cut the checks at any point in time. So so if, if a project doesn't come to fruition, like any of these projects on this board, on this proposal, the checks, the county will just absorb the money back at that drop dead with date and they can put it into the budget for twenty twenty four and do whatever they have to do. Cause there's pretty much no strings to the Arca. So, they can offset road costs, they can buy some more radios if they're short on the siren dollars, they can be coming with a party this quarter.
We have no intention of finalizing this list at all today.
No, no, I want you guys to chew it over and think about it. I just wanted, the thought process was to get it in front of everybody before we had to finalize the budget. So that we could chew it over, think about it, say we think that's too much, that's too little, um.
At least we have to chew it in front of us or
Yes.
An idea.
Yeah, and, and.
I like to have this idea in front of us, whatever we can look at.
And I guess, the, the top portion again was, was that was the committee's work. The bottom portion was just my thought process on what you would do with the county side of things, cause I was trying, I was working backwards from what are the county needs. And then working our way to the ARCA money. And that's kind of how we worked our way back down from the initial, well, half half, to more like sixty five, thirty five, sixty forty type of thing, because the county's needs are pretty heavy. In terms of if you wanna get the generator done and put some of that money toward that fair building and buildings and, you know, siren costs and all that. So that extra two fifty go back to Siren and everything, but I, I guess I looked at it too from the standpoint of where are we getting paid for our buck? And where are the dollars going? And if you look at it, where do we, where do we derive property taxes from in the county? Well, a lot of property taxes obviously are ag land, ag land valuation. Uh, so we've got a good mix, I think. Where some small communities are getting dollars. Uh, egg center for kids. We got the Entertainment Center, that's gonna be for in town, but for kids and the whole community. We've got dollars for Rule Fire, which is for ag. Lot of ag type stuff, you know, there's a kind of a good mix of all kinds of different options in here. So again, no, we're not looking to finalize today, but this is just for everybody to chew over. Um, the thought process is we could finalize at any time. I'm not saying it has to be the next meeting, but the week after. But we could always take dollars back from this, be to offset budget if we feel that way.
Or some of these projects are, this is the start of the project they're gonna fund themselves. Like, for instance, I'm just using, sorry, I'm picking on interior. The Devil's Lake Board is obviously gonna fund itself once it's going.
Well, to a point, yes, yes.
Do you even sure to think it will be able to?
Yes. Uh, you know, most of these projects aren't like happening tomorrow, like, so it's just or in, in anticipation of next construction season or of, you know, months out from now. So we've got time to make a determination. The whole thought was, is we could have a determination made probably by November or something like that, or sometime not. Whatever. That's why we wanted to get it in front of the commission before September, so we can make a determination. And that doesn't necessarily mean that that can't change either, but this is just an initial ask, basically. Okay, further questions?
Just another question for Terry, I guess, since you're here. Have you had talks with the city on this?
Yes, yeah, we got one last night. We're, I mean, we're at the city commission.
Okay, I'll deck it.
Okay, fine, good. They're, they're, sure they're gonna be on board, I think, if we're about the same.
Okay.
We've been discussing with the committee about it.
Well, and that was part of the reason, the rationale behind the, the two fifty, because the city has kind of stated not like concrete, but that's a com, a level they would be comfortable helping at as well. We figured we'd wanna match what the city would be for.
And another question seems like you were wrong, probably quite a bit. Who's gonna own the walling?
Who's gonna own the building? Well, we're working with Jamie Levers, Levers Corporation or Levers, whatever, and, uh, we're gonna have a long, either a long-term lease or we're going to buy the building. So Jamie's all in on this thing, you know, he's got five kids that he wants, they have something to do with it.
I think that's a good question, cause that question got asked me too. People are concerned that if we're gonna be pumping up a bunch of dollars into this, are we gonna own it eventually? I think they're great that Levers is on board, but I think a lot of people would like to see the fact that you own it somewhere, like it's a lease to own.
Yeah, a lease to own or a long-term lease with an optional.
How do they make sure that's when you're working this angle?
Yeah, that's what we're trying to do.
I mean, we're not.
So that we're not pumping money to something that eventually could just go away.
Right.
We're not taking care of our responsibility. We don't ask that question.
Yeah, no, I agree.
That was one of the first questions I had.
I trust your.
Terry, I don't think.
Yeah, I do. We've actually got, we've people out there. Some people say, oh, they're, they're, we're making, just trying to help Levers all the time. Levers is trying to help us, I don't know, they're, he's all in, like, he's got five kids and he wants something for his kids to do this, right, I'm not sure.
Well, it's a good fit too. It's a good location, good building. It, it, it'll work well if we can pull it off, hopefully.
And he's got a lot of other land rights either that we could just move or sell if we were even that out of the building.
It's a good spot, you know.
Yeah, easy access, good parking lot.
I think, when you asked that question, I think the way I was brought to my attention is they didn't wanna put a pile of money in there in one day to say, we're gonna sell this place and here we sit.
Yeah.
That's the concern.
Yeah, but it has to be, the, the agreement to the lease and everything has to be crafted correctly to make sure there's no outs. If we're putting money into it, we get long-term paid for our buck. At least as long as the assets are appreciated. Yeah. Okay, further questions or discussion on the sheet in front of you? Okay, seeing none, we will just put it on whole business for next meeting and we can either do something next meeting or just push to the next meeting and we'll give everyone enough time to think about. Okay. Oh my goodness, it's nine o'clock on the most. God, what a lot. All right. Perfect. I wasn't even watching the clock, so be sure we didn't yell out. I can't, you're in. That's why you were kinda nodding at me.
Yeah.
We're just saying, I'm like, we're getting to the good part. All right, nine o'clock. So we'll move into our budget hearing for the twenty twenty three budget. I'm gonna get my sheets in my car over here, so I can answer questions if people have questions. Okay, so, do I have to technically open a budget hearing or just budget hearing technically, it's nine o'clock, it's not closing, opening? Okay, thanks Terry.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, Terry.
Thank you.
Where, where is all of the, oh my.
I don't know. That would be called in.
Yeah, well, that's.
Already called.
Well, that's kind of like, I mean, I'm not, this is, I'd, I'd just say.
I've invited them to, you know, it's like, come stage your stuff, please, yeah, come.
And I've had twelve questions.
Yeah.
They had a, they had a, a home rule meeting in Grand Forest, nothing to do with the day and nobody came.
No, I heard that.
Well, that huge county, nobody came to me.
Yeah.
Probably got a pass, so.
I don't know. Either, either everybody hates it or everybody loves it, so.
Till they're voted.
Till they're, yeah, yeah, we'll see. Yeah, we had twelve people, we were living the high life. Okay, uh, so budget hearing, uh, we don't have anybody here to ask questions, but for the camera, there are people up there watching. I'll just make some quick notes on the budget. So budget for, for fiscal year twenty twenty three currently, uh, we are, we are at a total of fourteen point six million dollars. Uh, of which county property tax makes up seven point five million of that, give or take. Uh, so right around fifty one percent of the budget of our total budget is coming properties actually, which means forty nine percent of the total budget is coming from other sources. federal baselues and all that kind of stuff, state baselues. So it's kind of interesting when you're looking at a budget like that. Proposed mill levy for twenty twenty three currently, uh, is at a hundred and eight point six nine mils, which would be up from the previous year's one oh three point five. Um, so the increase in the budget is right around six hundred and seven thousand dollars, I believe, once they took out the state stuff on the, for the other. So six hundred and seven thousand dollars, which is about a nine percent increase, um, of total dollars, but that's what some of that's in the capture on the, on the additional dollars on the bill like. Bills went from sixty six thousand and changed to sixty eight thousand, it's changed. Um, of which, so we're at a six hundred and seven thousand dollar increase on the budget, but an interesting portion of that is if you, if you look at the budget line for line, six hundred and fifty three thousand dollars of those increases are for law enforcement center, state's attorney, and the sheriff's department. And so actually the budget went down fifty thousand dollars in the other areas, even with adding in a race for the employees to try to keep up with inflation. But that's where our costs are coming from, plain and simple. There's just no way to go around it. It's from trying to keep the streets of Devil's Lake and the surrounding communities safe is where the costs are coming. Uh, plain and simple. So we parked on this and we've hit it and we've hit it and we've hit it. We've gotta work with the state that's coming, so I can try to get some help. Cause it is, it is killing us. Um, if you look at the total overall budget, local budget of the seven and a half million, four million, a little over four million dollars is law enforcement incarceration and state's attorney. So fifty three percent, fifty three and a half percent of the total of the local, of the local funding is law enforcement costs. One point four million of it is roads, so that's another eighteen point six five percent. So over seventy two percent of the budget is roads and law enforcement. Which is basic dependence of government. That's what we're here to do, to provide services. Um, the, 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 the dollar figure of the Prairie Dog, I went and looked at the buckets last night, cause I was curious to see where we're at through August. Uh, we are projected to fill by February, I believe is what it's looking like right now. And we're looking at one point six seven million dollars coming from the Prairie Dog.
And that's gotta be strength of, of what?
Roads, roads, roads and bridges, any road and bridge it asks. So the question.
Let me help.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, that helps a lot.
Which helps a lot. Yeah.
We don't have that, we're not texting me, really.
No, 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 we just don't.
We're probably closing roads, right? Yeah, we're virtually, yeah.
Well, and if you look at the long-term U G P T I study costs for our county over the next twenty years or whatever, it's a massive number. It's not near as bad as like a Walsh County or a Trail where they have all the bridges, but it's still a massive number over twenty years. I mean, I think it's like eighty some million dollars. I mean, that's, I'm sure they built inflation in on that too, but forty five million bucks a year just to keep our system at its current level. Which, we're gonna struggle to keep up with. I mean, even though we're in pretty good shape right now, we're gonna struggle to keep up with this.
Would you take a minute to thank the legislators for what we've gotten?
Yes, for sure.
Prairie Dog money, take over the funding of social service. You throw that on top of this budget. And I hate to say it, but
We'd, we'd be gapping.
Taxpayers of Ramsey County would have a damn bunch to bitch about. If we had to take care of social service funding and we didn't have the Prairie Dog money coming in. We really would.
You're right.
So, the things that have gotten done in the last number of years benefited taxpayers of Ramsey County very much. And I really don't care, we like to say that.
So you're right, if you're playing some, well, first year I was on the commission, I think we were at a hundred and thirty nine mils or something.
Yes.
And now we're, we've consistently been running between ninety five and a hundred and five or so.
Yes.
That's, that's a thirty something mil decrease because of social service.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, we'd be, we'd be able to general fund milk cap right now, if, if, if they hadn't taken on social services.
Well, I'm not happy about law enforcement either, but you're right, we're not defunding the police in this community, I know that, no chance.
We gotta look at the positives though, too.
Absolutely.
And I, 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 I hard fought the stuff that we need more help, but we haven't received a lot of help. That's actually what I think we're going with that.
You were pointing out where we need to ask for help.
Yeah.
It's not that, yes, it's killing us on, on our budget, but on the other hand, if it was another department that was killing us, we need, we'll need help on that.
Yeah.
You know, and that's, I think that's where you're going to, I feel that's where you're going with that.
I'm going with it from the standpoint of, I look at it, at our incarceration costs and our law enforcement costs as an extension of like a social service cost. Because we are a hub community, so the things happen here. Because, so then because of how the structure of central COVID works, we end up picking up people because drug trades happen here. And then we have to incarcerate them on Ramsey County's dime, just because it happens that the largest city in the area happens to be Ramsey County, right? So that's, that's where my concern, I, I'm not saying the state should take all our incarceration costs, but I think there needs to be at least a discussion about the fact that the larger hub communities end up bearing more costs than the outlined communities, generally speaking, because of the things that happen in those, I mean, cause more people deems more crime, deems more everything. And that's why, like saying social services, our social services cost were astronomically compared to other counties around us, because where do people that hate services gravitate to? In communities that have the services. And that's not a bad thing, that's a good thing, but unfortunately, how the structure of the payment system works is not, it's antithetical to how the system is, should be structured. So that, that's kind of where I'm thinking about, but you guys are completely right in saying the state hasn't stepped up and helped us in many areas. And, but doesn't mean we still can't. Keep asking. Keep that conversation.
You can handle it.
Yeah. Anyway, we have nobody here to ask questions.
I, I have a question on the veteran service budget. Only reason I'm asking is I've been looking into a few different things. And I know he's been taking care of counter coming because they don't have anybody up there right now.
Okay.
Okay, boom.
No, and we're not, we're not giving anything from them, yeah.
Those people are just coming here to need help.
He's not going up to counter coming, they're coming.
Well, yes, correct.
Well, yeah, but we, we, we can't, we can't technically ask for anything. Because it doesn't matter where a veteran walks into, it doesn't matter if they're from Devil's Lake, they can walk into Cas County Veteran Services and they have the service.
So looking at his budget, I know he's traveling to vets and now, correct?
They pay part of it, they pay part of it.
Yeah.
But they're paying part of the wage, not the travel, right?
Uh, not true, not, not true at all.
I don't think, I don't think anybody gives any travel.
That travel line in his budget is for travel and he goes to conventions and activities like that. That travel, that travel line in his budget is for travel and he goes to conventions and activities like that.
That's what I'm asking, so is this individual using his own vehicle to go to?
Yes.
Yes.
With no compensation.
No. Either, I don't know if he's ever come back to us or want to travel or it's never been put in there.
I don't disagree, there shouldn't be compensation for this. Because when I'm looking at that individual's wages, if he's not getting compensation to go to these places, I mean, we need to ask Benson and Nelson. There's no way I would do it for that money.
How much are they, how often do they go once a week to each place?
Right. I think it's once a week.
Do they spend a half, spend a half a day in each place or whatever?
Houston's a half a day, um, Tuesdays in Nelson County, and all day on Thursday at Nelson.
Well, let's get him in here and let's find out, but the problem, I, I don't believe Benson or Nelson are gonna have a problem. Paying low mileage to each other, and I'm sure they won't, they won't at all.
I don't think it should, my personal opinion, I don't think it should come out of the individual.
No, I agree completely, I guess it was just travel there.
And granted, I know he was hired to help.
Let's get him in here, let's get him in here.
I, I guess it was just an oversight, again, we didn't think of it at the time.
We don't need to push away.
Well, it was here, yeah.
Yeah. I'd like to ask.
In here?
That's a good question, I never thought.
And I'm just looking through it, because you know, other, other entities. You have to go somewhere, obviously, we're gonna. There are other offices, we're gonna give them something back, which is not gonna, like, use it on their dime.
Well, not, it's not a huge item, it's like a.
No, I, I know that.
I don't want to get on the phone with Benson and Nelson today either, I mean.
Oh, but we can reach out to them.
Yeah, I don't, maybe, I can't believe it's gonna be a problem.
So does Towner. Towner has somebody over there, right?
I think they don't right now.
Because don't we, by law, have to have somebody? You have to have somebody for so many hours.
I just think they're vulnerable if someone, yeah, they're, they're trying to hire somebody.
Oh, right now they are?
I don't, apparently, I don't know, I'm just ashamed, because they don't have.
We can ask for it, Bryce is here, we'll ask. And, and I think the, the only reason this came up is, oh, that working, eight thirty fifth was coming up, they came back from activation. There's a lot of people that are going from their services. You know.
Yeah.
I'm sure we did that.
Yeah, that's something we can put on the, going forward, I think that's a good question, just a little bit of background on it, the, the thought process behind it was that Benson lost their B S O and Nelson lost their B S O. They wanted us essentially to somewhat pay more of the bill, but we said, well, it only makes sense that if, you know, if, yeah, pub community. Where are people coming to do things like grocery shop or go see, uh, medical services or whatever, they're coming here, well, if they needed to see the B S O, they would just see the B S O in Devil's Lake, so. At that point, Stacy was over B S O and he was keeping track of all of the Nelson County and Benson County, we were seeing a pile of those veterans in Ramsey County, which is a good thing. But, so then we worked with the other counties to say, hey, let's, let's structure the basis of the cost. Off of total veterans in each county, so that means hypothetically of total capture you could get in each county. We should look at that again in terms of how many veterans are in each county, because my guess is that Ramsey probably has more now as a percentage, should, we probably should pick up a select bit more. But, uh, I think it would be worth probably looking at that, at the same time talking to Nelson and Benson about some additional costs. And at the time, I guess we didn't think about it much because Stacy was all, he was over in Nelson County, so.
And like, like Ed said, it would be a new thing, but I just don't think it should come out of here.
So put on for a future agenda, we'll do a little back checking and talk about the other companies and see if they're something.
We want them to have a plan when it comes into us, too, you know, they.
Exactly.
Give them some time and we'll get care of it.
Okay. Are there questions or discussion on the budget?
What do you think, Jeff?
Yeah. You know, I don't think anybody, you know, wants to see taxes increased, but I, I don't know where we'd cut. You know, I think, uh, I would like, Mr. Lighton pointed out, you know, our law enforcement incarceration prosecuting costs have risen dramatically over the last several years and they continue to do so. Um. I don't know if there's any way around that. Certainly like to see some legislative help with some like incarceration costs or. Cost reductions, uh, you know, don't expect them to pick up the entire tab, but. Um, certainly, uh, a small ask would be, be beneficial. Uh, one thing I noticed in both the discussion of the, the ERPA funds for the, for the county and for the. And the, the budget itself, we, we took out a couple vehicles for a couple departments' last budget discussion and. I didn't see them anywhere in the ERPA discussion for county side of things. Um.
What vehicles were we speaking of?
Uh, emergency management and that tax office.
And, yeah, we're gonna talk about that following.
I, I see that, but.
The, the thought process is we had the COVID dollars still, the original COVID, so we would take them all back.
Okay.
I think that's what we talked about Jeff the very first time that day.
Right.
Otherwise, I would have put them in ERPA dollars, yeah, you're right.
Just don't want them forgotten.
No, no, no.
So.
No, I, I agree, we need to take care of that as well.
But I think the, the budget, you know, given the inflation numbers and being able to come in as low as we are, I think. You know, I think our departments, uh, we owe my debt of gratitude for coming in as low as they did. Um, and keeping, keeping costs as minimal as possible. And. You know, still be able to. Give our employees. A cost of, well, I shouldn't say a cost of living increase because it, it doesn't meet that, but, um. Give them some additional compensation, um, along the way, and.
Like a half a cost of living.
Yeah. You know, I, I think we said it once and we should say it again and again, is that our employees are our most valuable asset. And, uh, you know, we, part of the reason we have such low turnover in the county is because I do think we, we try to treat them as fair as possible. Continue to do so.
I hope they're happy with the, the four percent that we've. Put out there, because a lot of places are only at point like six or two point five. And I, like I said before, I, I wasn't getting everybody to. What they live in Gotham, but I just don't, I don't think I actually do that, it's just, it's not.
But we're taking care of a pretty good benefit package here.
Yeah, I think they're happy, I've never heard anybody complain.
I'm just, I'm just looking at it.
Others complained about it.
Well, we've got, I mean, again, like I said, we, we, since I've been here, we've had barrier in more turnover.
Yeah.
I mean, you have the occasional. You know, but where we have the most turnover is, is probably social services and, but that's from young people, we're going to new jobs, and that's just, that's where the turnover comes there, but. We have a lot of really large.
The social services, we're not covering that.
And, and that's taken out of state salary. And we have that discussion very constantly there, but we wish we could take a little bit of additional dollars and change the pay scale upwards, we could keep people. But they get capped out and then they have to go someplace else basically to get paid. And it's a crappy deal, but you, you gotta work with the parameters of the price, because the, the state's got, you know, what did you last session, two, two percent or something like that? So we're out here every year trying to keep up with cost of living and they give a two-year viennium raise of two percent. I mean, it's, it's just, it's untable, I mean, but regardless, I mean. And not to muddy the waters more, but in, in looking at the initial salary study stuff that's starting to come back, we're gonna have that coming up. Uh, they actually have some of the initial stuff done. Um, I don't know how to put it, pleasantly surprised, we're actually not in bad shape.
I mean. The research that I have done. That we're not.
We're, we're in the ballpark.
We are definitely.
On a lot of stuff, so actually, we're, we're in pretty good shape now.
Surprisingly. You know? I mean, I'm not gonna lie, I think Jeff had said it one time, a little fearful putting it out there because you don't know what, what's gonna come back.
Yeah, correct.
You know, it could come back and kick you in the face, it'd be like, oh, what have, what have we been doing?
No, but you know what, I feel, I shouldn't say good, but I feel. I know you validated, but just. We're in the ballpark, which means that the work we've done in trying to keep up. Has been good work.
Correct.
It means we're, we've been in the right track, we're trying to take care of our employees the way, and there's gonna be some adjustments, and that's good, that's. Part of doing the salary survey was to show the employees, hopefully, okay, you're in the right spot or you're not, and we're gonna take care of you, you know? And, you know, so it costs someone to do it, I realize, but I think it's, I think it's gonna be beneficial in the end, and everybody knows we're trying our best to at least try to stay clear and take care of employees. That's our goal always. We want to keep, we want, I can't remember, I think it was, was it Henry Ford or something like that said, the only thing worse than keeping. Uh, or than losing an employee is keeping a poor one and not training them. Or something to that effect, so when you get a good employee, you keep the good employee, and you've got good employees, you're gonna keep them.
And new employees are costly.
Yes.
Because you think you've told them everything.
Yeah.
Assume you have.
Training is expensive.
Training is expensive.
And the only reason I say that is. We are, where I work, we're in a situation where all the old time. We're losing all that experience we're bringing from the people there. And not that they're bad people, but we are really undereducated. And it, it's kicking us in the butt, you know, and we're starting to realize to try to catch up, training is super expensive.
Yeah, institutional knowledge when it walks out the doors, massive.
You don't see it until you lose a mass, that's just like we did, when you lose five, six people at a time, because their age is all.
Yeah, they were just a retirement age.
They all came in the same.
They made up the same, so I imagine in the past, they were in the same predicament we're in now. But when that came out, I didn't see that because everybody was just. More experienced than I was. No, think about that, we're here to do, yeah.
And now I see.
Understand. Okay. Further discussion on the budget, we're not approving today, that's first thing in October, but this is just for people to, uh. Discuss or question or air grievances.
At least we're coming from some grievances.
Right, Ed? In, in, in talking to Jeff's comment about where do we, if we wanted to find savings, I, I don't know where we might, just because. My initial thought process was maybe we could offset some of the save, now we're already taking essentially. Eight mils off budget between generator and sirens radio and more than a radio, it's probably ten plus mils off budget that we would have to spend otherwise. Out of the ARPA dollars, so we're taking that off budget, we're taking, hopefully, the, the, the two vehicles are gonna be off budget. We've taken some of the drone stuff that we needed to get done off budget, and we've tried our best to use those dollars as much as we can. And the only other place you could do it is maybe from the prairie dog costs, but in looking at the twenty twenty four, staring down two point seven million dollars to pay. I think we're almost gonna have to keep powder dry and.
Well, that's what the ARPA was supposed to do, that's what it was supposed to take some off the tax base.
Well, we're getting stuff done that we need to get done.
Right.
E- initially, it wasn't.
Yeah.
And, and, and either, and either way, eventually, you were gonna have to put a.
It was supposed to be lost revenue, there was.
No, e- initially, it wasn't to ask the direct savings on the taxpayers and. Yeah, but I'm glad that they've loosened their, their thought process and that can give us some leeway on, on that, because if. The things that we're looking at doing isn't that. You know, it, it's a need, not, not just a want, it's, they're, they're needed, you need to have. In a facility like ours, you need to have an emergency generator, you, you need to have, uh, some of the things that we've been purchasing. It's not a, you know, a. Eye in the sky type of, of spending, it's, uh, something that are needed, and. When you do need it, it's, and I generally have to come out of general funds. And so a lot of it is needs, not only what we need, but we feel that the community needs. A lot of community needs are being taken care of or, and, you know, supplemented, I guess. You know, we're not taking care of everything that some of the community needs, but. Uh, you know, there is a lot of different asks and we try to meet as many of them as we possibly could.
And that was the initial hope with the ARPA plans, was we could get county things done, but at the same time, show the community that we're trying to get some things done in the county too with those dollars, so.
And I think our initial thing was, we do, or we were telling the public, a hundred percent of the money is not gonna be able to go back to the public. But on the other side, if you look at it, it really is, if you, if you're remodeling or doing something into this facility, the public all comes here, right, for some reason, some way, somehow. But you are.
Well, I look at it from the standpoint of we need a generator.
Yeah.
So if we didn't use our other funds for the generator, it'd be coming out of the general.
Yeah, and they, we, we'd be finding four hundred thousand dollars over the general pay for a general. So when you look at that, you really are.
They're getting the money back, is what they're getting, it's just we're taking care of things we needed to take care of over the last year.
Absolutely.
Okay. Anyway. Anything else on the budget? Okay, we got nothing else, we'll, I don't think I can close the budget hearing, but I'm gonna say I'm holding. If anybody has questions, uh, uh, YouTube land, don't hesitate to shoot an email or if you have a call, we're on the county Facebook page, or Facebook page, county website. So, uh, look us up and shoot us an email, and hopefully we can answer questions.
Go to YouTube channel.
Huh?
The YouTube channel.
Yes.
Yeah, subscribe to that, you'll get a notification of the videos.
Yeah.
Starting and go back and watch it.
Go to YouTube and watch us, we're like stars on YouTube. Okay. Last thing, I don't mean you want last thing, but last thing out of the business, vehicle discussion, emergency management and tax director. And we have the emergency manager back there, Warren and Chris. There are a couple of proposals. Uh, Chris brought this to me last week and saying. Uh. The, the, the thought process behind this is if we go, he's, he's got bids for local dealers. Off of vehicles they will be getting that are like one L S and, you know, the, the base grade models. If we buy one that way versus bidding, bidding it and, and then waiting, we might be waiting twelve months or whatever for a vehicle, so maybe it's better to at least look at what the cost would be of. Getting one of those ones that's coming in. But I told them, come in, give us the numbers and we can take a look at it and kind of look at it.
Yeah, I got a. In your packets, there's a couple of bids, uh, that was just two that were coming in, I have a few more bids that are, uh, outstanding, they're just trickling in. Um, I got one last night. So they're all roughly that price and that, that is actual vehicles that we're going to be getting. Uh, our dealership says if you're gonna bid, bid for one now, maybe, maybe eight months, maybe next year, so it's. It's kind of getting bad for, uh, vehicle acquisitions, Leonard and Kevin, that the same problem with the pickup list, who's getting?
This white one across the street, that's, uh, what the tax office, you know?
That'll.
What year is this? I'm looking at the normal amount of.
Well, it's gotta be two thousand something, because tell me issues didn't come up.
About a little three.
I think it's like an old breed. I had, I had an old. I was the first year they came up, the solid vehicle.
It actually runs?
Yeah.
Yeah.
This, this is my first question.
This is a, this is a question I have. And I'm not against one way or the other. Why was that vehicle not A A? The last time we were in here, lights are on, A B S serving soon. Why wasn't it not taken to the shop and brought to our attention how much it was gonna be to repair that? And I have no, one way or the other, but that should have been brought to our attention if it needed five thousand dollars to replace items in it. And then we make a decision, hey, is it feasible to repair this vehicle or do we need to replace it? You know, instead, it was brought to our attention when, hey, we need a vehicle, I would have rather had it brought to our attention, and this is any department. Hey, this is what it's gonna cost. Is it, is it time, you know, kind of like Kevin does, hey, it's time, this vehicle is three hundred and fifty thousand, it's time to replace it. I just don't want to get blindsided, you know?
I agree.
Well, I, I think it has been properly maintained throughout the years. I, I think what, what's happening is they get the, the warning lights that do periodically come on and off, get them checked and. Find out that they're just, uh, whether it be a glitch in the dashboard or the warning lights themselves. But it's not an actual fixable problem that's, you know, oh yeah, you need to replace that part or you need, it's not gonna operate without this part. You, you know, it's, it's more of a electronical issue that's been kind of a curse of that model of, and.
There's a present rambling in there.
Yeah, that, that GM has no, it, you know, has identified that's very difficult to fix and, you know, but it still operates, it just has, and so when those lights are on, you don't know whether or not it's telling you something that's, and that's actually a problem, or if you actually, yeah, and, and.
And, and it was not, it was not that steep auction.
It was?
Yeah.
What is?
What year, we don't know?
I don't know.
Beth, you know what year that, that vehicle was purchased?
The previous tax directors typically within their budget each year are when they need a different vehicle. Um, so they have time to make sure to look at surplus sales and that type of vehicle. That one was purchased at the state, um, it was 2008. Uh, so that was my objective when this entire thing started, is I was just throwing the budget, you can cut it, you can let it in. We'll see what happens next year with finding something, uh, because obviously there's not a lot that's like to get through at the moment, um, but that kinda got changed up. I don't, I can wait here, I'd see again next year, I have no problem. I just was following what has kind of been the typical scenario of a vehicle that a hundred thousand miles, these you kinda look at it.
Did you, you used the vehicle?
Yes.
And you take it out?
It's always ready for us to get around the entire county, we drive by everything in the county at least once, if not more, multiple times. Where you all are measuring.
How many, how many miles you get out of the vehicle a year approximately?
You know, not terribly much.
Ten or?
Yeah, I like those things like that.
I do.
Um.
And other than that, it just sits right there.
Yeah, that's what we give it for out of our, um, education, and that's this much over. Which lately hasn't been as much because we kind of have turnover, but when we do have new employees and they have to do so much certification, really put a lot of our time on it.
Chris, did they give you a value trade in on that, or is that something we just sell out?
That's the best vehicle, um.
Yeah, Bert's manager doesn't have a vehicle on it.
I have none.
Um, the trade in they did receive was $3,600.
Okay.
Let's leave it at that.
And we get.
Three, three thousand?
But I can be honest with you, personally, I don't, I, unless it is financially a reason to get a new vehicle, I, I don't necessarily want a new vehicle, where we're going is three feet or perhaps sometimes, and, you know, I drive through it because I gotta get there to see what's going on and what we need to do, uh, so.
Looks like it's pretty late, it's probably blown over a lot of money, huh?
Yeah, we survived so, so far, you know, and there's a lot.
So may, may, maybe a good option for you guys again would be looking at this, if you wanna, don't need something brand new, but it's something you like, maybe look at a state fleet one.
And I did, there's a sale coming up October 12th, and I did look into that because they were talking about the state. Um, unfortunately, the vehicles there almost all have been damaged, and a few that didn't, they, they all kind of have.
Yeah. There's no sense of buying a 15 or 18 or whatever, it's that old there.
Yeah.
You know, what's it like?
I mean, like our sheriff's department vehicles, they're on the road every single day, they can pile a mile on it.
I think the sheriff. Doesn't the sheriff have one, right now exit?
He, he said he's got a, a vehicle or pick up that.
Exit.
Yeah, but, um, he'd be a backup, but they use our vehicles pretty hard. Um, and when he gets rid of them, he gets rid of them for a reason.
I just, somebody relayed that.
I didn't tell you that it does last, I forget, yeah.
I will, I will say one thing with the vehicle that we drive, it's somewhat important because we're buying into parts, their homes.
I think having a professional.
Professional, yeah, and not the, the sheriff coming in or something of that.
I don't do that.
You know.
I'm not here to serve a ward, I swear.
I'm not gonna do that.
I'm just here to measure the base, and that wouldn't.
So that, that's one thing that we try to, I try to wear like our shirts that say something, just so.
Yeah, so they know you're there, what your intent purposes, that's pretty cool.
Well, I think we are. Representing the county in a professional manner, I think is important.
Very cool.
Um, keeping our employees' safety is of utmost importance, um, and having a good, decent, reliable vehicle that they can traverse the county or the state with, um, is, is important.
Well, all this discussion started obviously to an emergency management, because we don't have an emergency management vehicle, and now with the drone work and everything else, Chris has been using his own personal vehicle.
So this vehicle would be between the two.
Well, we're looking at two separate vehicles possibly.
Two separate vehicles.
So the emergency management vehicle would be more structured and set up kind of like a sheriff's department style vehicle where they, but they, you know, because he has to have all the radios and all of those things in it for the emergency management, whereas tax director's office just needs to be a straight up, whatever kind of SUV that you can get through grass and mud and.
I think we'll have to use this vehicle.
But I just, I wanted to put it on the agenda so at least we can start thinking about which way we wanna go and costs and, and curts and things like that, and then again, the intent would be bring it out of the original COVID dollars, because we still have $300,000 sitting, sitting there. So we could easily, uh, do one, uh, both as.
Chris, do you have an idea of what additional equipment would be needed, required?
I do, um. You have anything you're talking about?
Yeah.
Yep, I do have that, um, that isn't, isn't cheap, and of course, because we don't have anything, we're buying all brand new. Uh, the biggest aspect of it is radios. A full radio, just the head unit speaker is $9,000. And that's more than a, and we get a $15,000 kickback.
Yeah, they see.
But to make it into a command unit, basically, it needs two radios, so it's just hard to be fair, I mean, I do have a radio budget, and I can take some of that money out of there. But the, the lockbox, the truck box, whatever you wanna call it, you know, they're like selling all of ours. That's what they overcharge us, first responders.
So what, how much money are you up into?
So, I, and I was gonna give you guys these, but they're expired, so I didn't wanna give you guys expired bids, bids sheets.
I just give a rough estimate of what you're thinking you're gonna need to make it.
So with the vehicle and the outfit, 70 would be probably, uh, that'd be the, the very top, I think. Uh, here's one of the outfits, 28 grand. Yeah.
What's that?
That's for outfitting the vehicle.
Seventy plus the 28?
No, no, fifty, fifty with the vehicle, and then 28 with, with the outfitting. And there's some, there's some fat to turn on these numbers, there really is, on the 28. Um, and I was loving, I was trying to get two companies to bid the exact same thing, but certain ones won't do that, so that becomes difficult. One would bid the whole unit without no radios, so then their bid looks super low. And one bid out the biggest or fastest radio, which I didn't want, so that's what they bid. So then the numbers look a little bit weird as well. But that would be a, a buffer zone, I wouldn't say.
Seventy, no?
Seventy would be the, would be the easy.
When we're talking these radios, are we gonna run into the same issues that we do with, uh, the sheriff's upgrading and all that?
These will be the.
Generation, okay.
But the hard part is getting them now.
Yeah.
Sheriff have the same problem.
Just sort of curious, Kevin Lee, but your expedition you drive, do you recall what we paid for that? That'd be kinda comparable for a car.
Well, it's a 17, but those drive about 36.
So 50 is probably not completely out of their element for what we're looking at for, considering how the inflation is happening in vehicles.
And that's, as you guys can see on the, on the, it worked too, that's even with the fleet discount and our county discount, I mean, that's, that's roughly what's coming in.
Yeah, like this top one, it's just, it's pretty much base, it's a one L, it's an LS, so that's the baseline model. I think the only thing it's got is it's got a little bit of favorite wheel on it or something like that, doesn't make a.
I mean, I was just, it's gonna sit in the parking lot then?
No, I'll drive it every day, I'll put my charcoal in the shop.
Well, and I think with your job being, you know, 24/7, it'd probably be something that you would drive all the time, wouldn't it?
Yeah, that's what I was saying.
Yeah.
Yeah, you would use it.
It's no different than Kevin, just traverse from home and back to work, and then use it during work hours, and then drive your personal vehicle.
Sure.
Or the sheriff's department does.
And that makes sense, I mean, basically, you have to be at the whim of an emergency response site. You don't know when, you know, a hydro tank or something, they go crazy and it might be three in the morning, so you don't wanna drive here and drive there. Remember crossing that little road.
Yep.
Well, I would do it, give this in consideration.
Yeah, and we have a little bit of time, it, it wasn't like it had to be done today, it was more a matter of, let's bring it to the attention of, of the commission, uh, so we know kind of where we're moving and the, and where the field was in terms of, do we wanna do it now, or do we wanna try to do a full bid and wait? See if we can get it out of many months from now.
I would, I would like if it could be done, you know, if I can find one that, that was gonna be fitting within this price range and upfit it, that would be okay, because even the outfits didn't take a long time. I think Steve waited six months for, get that window in to get this up to.
When's the, when's the state bid? Yeah, when's that state bid?
State fleet auction.
I think there is on, on October.
There's not that high level. Yeah, they usually do.
Two a year.
Two a year. Was it all two year?
It didn't look like anything on there that?
No, I bet 90% of that had that damage.
Is that hail damage?
Yeah, no.
Well, they don't, and I think part of it, you know, talking about, you know, as we've worked on the outfit and stuff, when you get into the larger counties, they have fleets. You know, so they have somebody that, you know, in the highway department or whatever, that that's their job, is basically taking, taking care of the vehicles and stuff. But when we have such small departments and everything like that, it just, you know, you're taking time out of when you should be doing the tax director's job to, you know, go get the vehicle, but that, it's not bad here, you take it over like Chevy, you have a market, but but still, you know, and try your best with what you got, you know?
And I would like to see that, you know, I know Beth's gonna use it the most, but if somebody else in the county has to use it, that we can make a, you know, plan.
Maybe a shared vehicle.
You know, but sometimes Nathan's gotta run off to the bank, I mean, I think, then he should be able to use it, or we gotta. No, 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 but if we could just, if we could get it, yeah.
Well, that'd be good, it'd be kind of like the one pool of vehicle for, for anybody that needs it, but mostly.
Mostly her, yeah, that's fine.
Beth, you, this was the only one that you got, um, priced?
It's the only one that they had available, I looked on, uh.
It's far, like Chevy, Dodge.
Did, I think it's called the general manager, um, the same person, he had a RAVI.
Oh, for the whole Devil's Lake Guards, and this is basically what they have.
Um, in the size range that we're looking.
Oh, yeah.
That should be four wheel drive.
And then a KU would be similar to a.
The KU is the first kind of that.
Similar to the.
Would be the, that type of vehicle. I'm sure there could be, and that is not, I mean, that was just yesterday, that's not, like I said, I wouldn't mind like seeing market, maybe isn't, but that's very, you know, hard.
Then unfortunately.
Is there, is there something like that's sitting there in the parking lot that you?
I kind of glanced yesterday, I didn't really know if this was commonplace here that we were in, having this discussion, but I, I even went to some of the other vehicle, uh, used dealers in town, and their miles were higher, you know, yeah, seen that, so they do assess it, I think that.
Well, I think the problem is.
This isn't that price though, for a new one.
It really isn't.
No, I don't think so either.
Yeah, with the warranty, and, and part of it's gonna be is that stuff on the lots is gonna be harder to find in a lower LS type of one, you know, because most of it's that when people are buying new vehicles, they're buying something with a little bit upgraded, not necessarily high topping, but you know, leather and all that kind of stuff. So every vehicle, you know, all of the 20 vehicles ordered, there's probably only two of them that are ordered at more in a fleet level, you know, so finding a fleet one, if you'll find, or buy from the state, probably gonna be sort of more difficult than this. Local dealers aren't gonna bring those in yet, unless somebody wants to buy it. Okay.
I think we should move ahead with.
I do too, yeah.
Yeah.
I think we need to take care of our own people and.
Make sure this block here.
Block, block here is important, meaning there are neck of the woods.
Yeah, my dad's voice is in the head.
Yeah.
Get a block here.
Yeah.
Anytime you have to order one of these.
Those ones are coming, um, I, I mean, I have a few more bids coming from the dealerships as well, um, I would like something, I mean, out of those colors and not with two inch wheel sets. The one, I don't know which one you're looking at, but there were one comes with upgraded fuel pack. Not really sold on.
Yeah.
But, uh, they are supposedly coming. Yeah.
But you're waiting on a couple other bids too, how long are these bids good for?
Thirty days.
Okay, so within our next meeting timeframe, if you can get those other bids too?
I have, I have, if you guys want, if I could pass these around, I got these last night, and I didn't even have a chance to get them, um, set out with you guys. But one of these is actually, uh, more of what I was looking at, it is truly a base model. Um, it is the top one.
Well, I can tell you right now, the bid isn't gonna matter. It happened to him.
But we have it in writing though, now, you didn't have it in writing, right? You didn't have it in writing.
Well, two, these, these are ones that are gonna be priced coming. I mean, they're, they're in the pipeline, they're supposed to be on the lot shortly, so the price should be good. Versus again, yeah, if we order something and we don't put it in writing.
I'm just making sure we got something, right?
Down a little bit, down a little bit.
Where's this bit?
What happened with this? This is the, these two are from Rideo, um, and I believe it's the Chevrolet, there's a Chevrolet and a GMC built up in on that one. It was a Chevrolet, I was kind of leaning towards, it would fit like ideology of like Stevens fleet, black, it's like.
Yeah, it's right in there.
And I don't think, it's not gonna be as big of an issue as it was for Kevin, because Kevin, you were looking for a three quarter car, it's certainly narrowing it down.
Rideo doesn't do a fleet discount?
That is.
They don't do a fleet discount.
Yep.
I don't know.
Okay, there's the dollars there, and then there's the reduction.
I don't know, will, will, will you go out of town for a couple thousand dollars?
I think we should buy in town, these are our taxpayers. Same.
This is right now?
That's right now.
Wow.
That's right now. We want our package, it's from in town, right?
Yeah, yeah, maybe like, like a dealer trade.
Never know.
I don't know. Oh, 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 oh. I'd like to keep the business local, so hopefully.
I would too.
Dealer trade.
Yeah. Well, since we, we have just a discussion, should we have it come back?
I think we should put it on the agenda for the next meeting, because that finishes, does this come back with additional information on it from both of you, and then we can figure out where we might go. I think that's reasonable. But the discussion has been forward, so we, we wanna do something, it's just a matter of, let's figure out.
Is, is there a reason why we're going Chevrolet and not Ford?
Kind of GM, man, I guess.
I'm just asking.
Well, you talked to the general manager there though too, and they didn't have any Ford, you got those.
Right, that was kind of.
It's just what they had coming.
Yeah, and that's the hard part, is what's coming in, so, you know, Ford wants to bid out a navigator, and that's a difference than that last, I guess.
Right.
It's the hard thing, is just what their dealerships, they're waiting on a bunch of what's actually coming. And I know with, the lot, the faster they hit the lot, chances of it selling is probably pretty good. That's kind of why I wanted to, if, if I could nail it down, at least maybe put a down payment on it, or something to hold it.
That's kind of crazy that they still bring in new vehicles that aren't spoken for.
They're selling vehicles that aren't even in the lot.
Yeah, that's just, yeah.
I don't know, all that stuff.
That's kind of crazy, they don't say that it's spoken for, it's kind of crazy.
So Beth, this one's on the lot, do I think that's?
That one's in transit.
But this one is too, oh, okay, I thought maybe it was on the lot.
Yeah, that one's also.
Oh, yeah.
So we've only got two weeks till our next meeting, try to compile a little more information and, and, uh, figure it out, and we can probably talk about it at our, at our meeting on the sixth. Okay, you have a good one?
Yep.
I like, I like it.
Okay, very good.
Thanks.
Thank you both.
Do you want this one back, Chris?
Yeah. Okay, uh, from there, I'm gonna let you, uh, doesn't look like it. Visitors and delegations. No one. Announcements from anyone?
Uh, looking at the after, observing on this, has a problem. Ad for, does everybody understand the process of selecting an engineer? For this generator. What we're looking for is an engineering firm, right? So, I mean, it says on here bids. Have you submitted, it's not really a bid, like a proposal for, okay, my firm can do this.
So like an RFP?
Yeah. Here's, here's gonna hand you their bill. Yeah, the bill will come in, yeah, right. I mean, that'll be up to that engineer to put together a spec sheet that he hands to the contractor, then you get your.
So we're, we're hiring an engineer to make sure that everything is engineered correctly, then they'll go out and actually bid it for us off of the specs and then we'll get, yeah.
Just sort of. So basically that engineer, so you can go back saying this is what was engineered. Yeah. That's basically all of it. So that when they hire a contractor, you can go back and say, this was the blueprint that you needed to follow, this is what the engineer saw.
Right.
Make sure we don't break the building down. And also be able to give some accountability and basically. It's also for that engineer to make sure that contractor is really exactly. It's not above.
Right.
We can say, hey, maybe we wanna change this or whatever. It is up to that engineer to say you're doing this wrong.
Right, right.
That engineer's just gonna hand you this.
Yeah, you're right.
You're not gonna negotiate it, yeah. You're just looking for the goals to see how it fall.
Uh, you're, the negotiation happens when we get the sub contract or the sub contract.
Usually isn't it a percentage of the bid price?
It's not, but that you can make.
Not always.
Well, I think if you guys, if between you and, and Kevin, if you'd like to visit with Roger and Boden, make sure that, that's, you know, if you're in this many times for engineers work. Make sure it's worded right, top of Roger, make sure you got it right. We just approved putting it in the paper, just you guys make sure you got the wording on it correct and I got.
You're not negotiating with that engineer for his money or the gold money.
Right.
He's gonna hand you the bill, I swear.
I would say, uh, have Kevin take a look at this too and see if there's changes that need to be made in the top of Roger Boden, should be okay.
Just watching out to provide or anything.
Well, yeah, we just wanna make sure it's clear too what we're attempting to do with. Getting those, not bids, but the RFPs basically. Okay, any other announcements?
Um, I have one here, um, we have two CDs coming out the end of this week. Um, interest rate has gone up a little bit. Kay wanted to know if we wanna put anything more in municipal funds, of course, that's true, okay. Um, we're just gonna leave the discussion up for it. Unless we wanna just run a CD, so we have the money on hand, because once you put it in the municipal funds, you kinda wanna leave it there for a while.
This is for these six months or a year?
I've had them in for a year at point three zero, I mean, it hasn't, it's been better than just leaving them in the money market. Um, right now, like Friday, when I'm gonna talk to him, if we do another twelve months, it's at one point two five.
I'll stop there.
And they're a million dollars a piece.
Kay didn't ever really need it or not.
Well.
So that's six, six months at one two one there.
You're gonna leave one out.
You know, we got six months is at one point ten.
And how much money are we talking that we put exactly how much?
A million, a million a piece.
So you're getting, you're getting a tenth of a percent for, for another.
Yeah. But we still have. A million and a half sitting at grammar just in savings because.
This is my question.
We, you know, we never know what a bill's gonna come off.
Yeah, I think you're better off doing this six month, so have a feeling they're gonna go up again.
Well, they're talking every three quarter of a percent hike when the, then meets again, so if that's the case.
So for a.
Well, three months is point nine five, but.
No, I'm saying if you're.
Put it both, put it both in six months and.
And then twenty.
We may look at that.
Be reable, you think, what if they interest?
For about a tenth? Are we better off to, so that we can, if it goes up three quarter percent now, we go over?
I don't think you wanna tie it too long because the market's gonna move up like.
I, I.
You're seeing it.
But I think we should just municipal bonds, we should just hang on, I mean.
You mean, in, in the big structure we have.
Yeah, instead of putting more in.
Well, I think that's up to you.
Wow. I mean, and I do think that, um.
Wait.
Come December.
They're gonna be, they're gonna be a tab to tack like tomorrow, or today.
The interest rate, I, I remember it's.
And this isn't due until Friday, I'm putting back in the findings.
Tomorrow, we still have it on.
Yeah.
But maybe we should just put it in savings for a month or so and just see where.
Yeah, that might be worth a while too, if it's, if we get the interest rate, it's gonna come quickly.
Yeah.
Which is a little bit.
I think, I think we have the elections, we're all crazy, that's what I.
Up.
Possibly.
Up, up.
That's why I don't, I'm saying.
Fuel will go up, gas will go up, everything will go up.
Oh, boy.
As long as it's not gonna go up too.
Yeah.
No, I'm, 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 we wanna be able to have options.
I think it's like.
I don't know, but in the, in the savings is the best thing, I think you wanna lock it in for the six year period.
If they did that, I mean.
I mean, we were only at, what did you say, three?
Point three, yeah, point three zero.
From there to.
Right.
Making money.
And the other one looks pretty good, municipal bonds looks good, but it's like, we don't wanna.
Oh.
Tie her up.
Take a risk, you're not really making any money.
We'll clap to election.
Eight percent back?
We should save it.
You will.
Oh, maybe put one in and pull the other one or, yeah, address.
That's.
No, that would half risk, I guess.
Half risk. A gamble.
Yeah, no, I think that. Be a proven way to do it.
If you don't get anything, it's savings, right?
Well, it hasn't been too bad, it's been okay. And of course, yeah. And of course, that arc of money. Um, I know, well, that's kind of all our money anyway, but at one time, they said we could take the savings off and throw it in the general fund.
The interest.
The interest part of it, yeah, the interest.
Yeah.
Those were gaining a little something off of them just sitting there.
Yeah.
So. Chamber, May, yesterday at noon, um. Some big, uh, events coming up, they have their annual meeting on the nineteenth of October. At the Elks Lodge. And it's gonna be a celebration of business and community. Four thirty to seven thirty, they will give out their chamber awards, I think there's a doodle survey being sent out to chamber members for. Your nomination or recognition of a. Headed various businesses, uh, chamber member, you know, uh. Few durations of being in business, uh, you know, a one to twenty five year, uh, twenty six to fifty year type of business. And longevity, they're doing smaller business, uh, chamber awards, um, you know. A small business, uh, one to ten employee type of thing. Um, they're doing a, a woman minority, uh, chamber member award and. Kind of a celebration of community and business, uh. Four thirty to seven thirty on the nineteenth of October, Holiday Showcase is scheduled for the Memorial Building. Uh, November fifteenth, never too soon to start your Christmas shopping. And, um. Yeah. So they'll have a board changeover, um, uh, their annual meeting. Uh, recognition as well, so. I think it was Peter Jerome will be leaving as the outgoing president during. And what will be the new president, uh, K L Stroming will be the, uh, media past president, Jack Yonkers will be the. Vice Chairman and Tara Erickson will be Secretary of Transportation. And they're having electrical out issues with the west end outlet again. Being seems to be a, an ongoing theme with the outlets this summer. Is there's one problem or another, and every time the west end gets reduced or shut down, then they have to. Uh, do something similar on the east end to, in order to balance the water quality, you know. So the movement of water downstream has been extremely limited and very frustrating. Uh, in this aspect of things. And. I think it's high time maybe we stand up and say something. Because it's, it's getting very aggravating. That they continue to. Operate that in a. In a fashion that doesn't meet. Our needs, um. You know. And that east end outlet was engineered and designed to operate at a certain threshold and it's. Never operated at that threshold that it was designed to operate at. And it has the capabilities of moving some serious quantities of water if they let it fuck. But they haven't been willing to do so, so. And they've had a lot of. Institutional knowledge leave, uh, at the State Water Commission level. Um, so. Knowing how to adjust those flows and water quality, uh, constraints that are set forth. In the Red River and in the, at the Canadian border. Um, you know, we're far exceeding those expectations, so we should be able to. And bring it up a little bit, and so, still need the thresholds that are placed upon us, so. But. I mean, it's, it's fearful, I know we've had a very dry summer and fall thus far, but that doesn't mean that we're not an event away from. You don't wanna run up again, so. Keep on reminding and, and asking and pushing, but that's all we can do, I guess.
You look the good way.
Right.
Yeah, any further announcements?
So water is so bad in Delta Lake, how come it's one of the premier fisheries in the state waters? Shut off the west end and not open the east end as much as it can go. Here.
But the, uh, water awards, uh, the state awards, the Commodore Award, the Water Wheel. Uh, those things are, they're seeking nominations for that as well as our, uh, Devils Lake Basin Water Stewardship Award. Those awards will be given out, uh, December eighth in Bismarck at the annual, uh, joint conferences of the Water Worlds. Uh, when we meet and get together down there. We generally have an awards banquet that threw tonight at the conference. Um, I think last year, I think we got together and nominated Governor Dullant, the one thing that he's ever had. During our flooding and he was commended with the, uh, the highest award that the Water World presents, I think that's the. And, uh, so if we have any other ideas for nominations, whether it be a local award through the Devils Lake Basin, through a state award, through the Water Wheel. Uh, Commodore or, do you have those nomination forms available?
Yeah. Reminder to, uh, association companies being, just before we meet again, so. September, October second, correct? What time does our caucus happen?
Two forty?
Two forty? Hello, anybody's ten, remember caucus at two forty?
I'll also check that a little, but should be available from here.
Is that on Sunday?
Yes.
Sunday.
Caucus on Sunday afternoon. Yeah, probably, yeah, I have to work the football game. Although on Sunday at some point, I don't know when. Depends on, uh, depends on the freezing weather, so I'll probably end up winterizing by camp or. Sunday night before I come down.
Sunday is two forty five.
Three five?
I think we have a very good contingent from Ramji County, so. Big deal, thank everybody that's signed up and willing to take time out and go. For worthwhile information.
There's a little hint. We wanna talk about the, since we have Roger come back in.
Yeah.
It was just noted, Roger, that. Um, instead of calling it a bid, we should call it maybe an RFP.
RFP or a proposal.
Yeah.
A logo?
Yeah.
That's all.
All right, I'm trying to stick my nose in here too. Trying to cover everybody. He, he was just saying that way to put it as a proposal and then they. We're just going out for an engineer.
Seeking proposals from that industry, but yeah, yeah, just change business proposals basically, we should be covering that, right? Okay, that should be good. Okay, any further questions for the good of the order? Is he done? Roger?
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.